Hello.
We're seconds away from being on film.
Yes.
Great. Good evening, everybody. This is the Carver Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for date October 1, 2019. We are in the Carver Town Hall in Room Number Four. As is my custom, I introduce all the board members to the public who are here, as well as those who may be watching on cable. As always, we appreciate and look forward to the attendance of Carver 58 when they videotape our meetings, and they are here again tonight, so we're happy about that. Gives everybody a good civics lesson, if they choose to watch on TV especially. To my far left is Fran Mello, who has many years of business administration experience, and we're happy to have her on the board. To my immediate left is Eric Mueller, who for many years operated his own septic and pumping business in town. He sold that and has moved on to a larger company where he's the district or territory manager, and he is our resident septic expert. To my immediate right is Vice Chair Sharon Clark, who is the senior member of the board and has many, many years of title search experience. She is our title expert, and her experience and knowledge in that field obviously comes in very handy for purposes of the cases that come before this board. To her immediate right is Alan Jermaine. Some of you may recognize him as the Chair of the Finance Committee in town, and he also sits on the Conservation Commission, so this is his third hat. We're happy to have him. He's had a lot of municipal experience for many years now. And sitting at the end of the table is our new alternate, Mark Poirier, who comes to the board with many years of educational experience. He was a teacher and also an administrator at the high school level, and his science and technology background, I suspect, will also come in handy on some of the cases that come before this board as well. I think it's a deep board with wide and varied experience. Yours truly, I have a law practice in town, so I'm the so-called resident legal expert. So it's, as I say, a good board. I'm happy to serve on it, and I know everybody at this table feels the same way. As is my custom, I do the administrative business first, and we briefly will address on our agenda the minute approval for our meetings of July 30, 2019, and August 20, 2019. I have distributed those minutes in advance of this meeting tonight so that the board members could review those minutes, and so that we use our time efficiently tonight. Let's take up the July 30, 2019 minutes first. Does anybody have any question, comment, change, amendment, or modification that they'd like to make? Everybody good?
Fran Mello's name is misspelled. I can't see that. It has a W on the end.
Yeah. You can take that off.
Well, we want to get Ms. Mello's name correct.
Corrected.
Yes. Other than that, does anybody have any change that they'd like to make?
Motion to accept as printed.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so those minutes are accepted and now made part of the permanent record of this board, with the exception that Ms. Mello's name is now corrected. She does not have a W at the end of her name. But she is a mellow person.
Yes.
Very mellow.
August 20, 2019, our last board minutes have also been presented in advance to the individual board members. Does anybody like to make a comment with regard to those minutes? Anything that they'd like to change? Is Ms. Mello's name spelled correctly?
It is on there. So the correct print has showed up.
Very good.
Must have been auto-spelled.
As we know, the commercial property, which has a viable location in South Carver, is difficult to find. Petitioners still looking for alternative locations, but have been unable to find a location which is suitable and affordable. Purchasing a leasing property to construct a new building is not an economically viable option.
For this particular petitioner, correct?
Yes.
It wasn't me.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
So move what?
To accept as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so those minutes for our last two meetings are now accepted and made part of the permanent record. In my discretion as Chair of this board, I do want to go to the continued case first, and that's because I suspect that we're not going to have to need a lot of time to get through this and make a decision on the merits, so we can address that, get you folks out of here quickly, and then move on to the two new cases, so to speak, that are before the board tonight. So I'm going to go to Case 60-C-60-R, William Jackson being the petitioner, requesting a variance from frontage setback requirements pursuant to Sections 5222 and 2320 of the Carver Zoning Bylaw for property located at 43 Woodhaven Street, Carver, which is at Assessors Map 60 Lot C 60-R in the residential agricultural area. Please let the record reflect that we did have a site walk after our last meeting of August 20, and that site walk was held on the date of September 7, 2019, on somewhat of a stormy morning, huh? I mean, no coffee and no donuts, so nobody can accuse us of being biased.
No swimming pool either.
No, so... Mr. Jackson, do you have anything further that you'd like to say in support of your petition?
No. Well, the last time we were here, you announced just per...
You are Mrs. Jackson.
Mrs. Jackson, sorry, Pamela Jackson. The financial burden that we have kind of gone through to this point and due to the errors of the way the court... I do have some of the invoices, if you wanted those.
Hold on to those for now.
Okay. Thank you.
My understanding is that there was some consideration amongst the board at our last meeting, that the front steps could be considered part of the structure. In other words, we don't measure from the point... from the street to the structure based on the structure's foundation, that we can consider the front steps to be part of the structure. And they're attached. These are not detached stairs. These are attached stairs, attached to the structure itself. So does anybody want to address that particular issue?
Just to give a quick review, you had requested... you had contracted for a foundation to be poured for your... it's just a metal storage shed frame building, and they poured it wrong. They poured it instead of long and wide. They did wide. Why? Or long and narrow, which left you with the issue that you were four feet short.
Right.
And in order to accomplish the four feet short, you needed a variance from the front setback, which is 50 feet. So we did a sidewalk, and we went out in your houses at a little bit of an angle, and I think it was Eric.
Yep.
Do you have your plan with you?
He does not.
He's not prepared?
Nope. I think we squared it off with those.
We squared it off, and we determined that you would not be coming in front of the house, and that was another separate issue altogether. We do have a measurement on the plan of 52?
I'm not sure.
What is it, 52 for the... Eric, can you get that through?
Yeah, it's 48.
Oh, it's 48 from the...
From the corner closest to the street.
Right.
And is that where the new build is going to be? Can you just come up here and confirm that for me? So is this where the new build is going to go out to?
Right.
So this was the corner where it rightfully should have gone out to.
Right.
And this is where they...
Yeah, they should have.
Accidentally cut it a little short and a little wider.
Right.
But so this is the corner here that would be the closest.
Right.
Right, okay. I just want to be sure that we have...
And that's 48.8 feet? Yep. If we consider the front of the house to be where the first step is, right?
Right.
So that means you're 1.2 feet short on frontage setback.
Right.
Got it?
Yep.
Whereas you haven't made them. They just... And so the financial hardship that we discussed is sometimes to meet the burden of a variance, you have to indicate that you had a financial hardship, and the financial hardship here is that you had contracted for a pad, and they poured it, and they poured it wrong, and now the hardship would be to re... to pull that one up, move everything back, where you have a retaining wall which now has to be moved. Okay, I just want to make sure we have our numbers right.
57.2, right?
Which number?
Did you get the 48?
Right here. This is where...
Because Eric and I measured that.
Right, but I don't have a straight edge.
Okay, I'm okay.
So if you take this straight edge, which is where they're measuring, like where the... This is...
Because we did this here.
Right.
We went across this to make sure that this didn't stick out beyond these front steps.
Right, and that's a separate issue.
Okay.
To be in front. That's a separate issue.
57 foot, this one.
So 57 to this corner, but not to... They didn't measure to the stairs.
So if you measure from the stairs...
So it's only 48?
It's 48 to here.
I got you. We didn't take that measurement. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But if we measure with the 48, then they're 1.4 feet short.
What am I...
To make the 50.
1.2. Right? 48.8?
Yeah, 1.2.
Isn't 12?
1.2.
Isn't that 12?
1.2.
That's tense.
Whatever. History majors. Not magic.
So 1.2.
Yeah.
But per the plans, if we don't count the front steps as being part of the structure, it's how many feet back? The edge of the house closest to the street would be how many feet back? 48.8, right?
It's what they're saying is 48.8, and for that, he needs 50.
Right.
So it's 1.2.
But from the front of the... from the edge of the house now, as it currently exists, to the street, how many feet is that?
57.
57.
57.2, right?
Right, but because...
Because it's on a slant.
But because the street is straight and the house is slanted, that's what's causing it...
Right.
The idea that, oh, it might be in front of the house, but it's not.
And topographically, he couldn't go back because there's a retaining wall there that drops off pretty sharp, so that eliminates him being able to just move the pad back four feet and set the whole building back.
And the side setback, since it's freestanding, is only 10 feet, so he's good there.
He's good there.
Yep.
He doesn't really stick out beyond the stairs.
It's just 1.2.
Okay. If we count the front steps as being part of the house?
No. If we take what the plan says... Because we have a planned measurement here, that we don't have a planned measurement for the front steps. The front steps come into play if they felt this was actually going to be in front of the building lot line of the house.
That's what I originally thought.
It is. It is. It's going to be in front.
But that's where the steps come into play.
Right.
So now it's not in front. We only need the...
Right. If we consider the steps as part of the structure...
Correct.
Then they need 1.2.
Just on dimensional.
Right.
Everybody here?
Yeah, I got you.
How you doing? Is that good? Everybody got that?
You guys got it?
Yep. We're keeping it at 48.8.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments from the board?
I don't know.
Anybody from the public like to be heard on this? Okay, seeing no one raising their hand, do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing. Public hearing, Case Number 60C-60R.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is closed. I now suggest that the board make the following finding, and I ask for someone to adopt this finding and then second it. That the board find that the front steps of the house, when the front steps of the house are considered, the proposed garage construction would no longer place the resulting structure in front of the house, and a frontage setback variance of only 1.2 feet would be needed for the proposed garage.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So that finding, which is a two-part finding, first, that when the front steps of the house are considered, the garage construction would no longer place the resulting structure in front of the house, and the frontage setback variance of 1.2 feet would be what would be needed for the proposed garage if that were what we decided, and we have just decided that. Now, do I hear a motion from a board member to grant the variance from the front setback of, let's say, two feet, so we can give them a little bit of leeway here, right?
They may need it with this crew.
So moved.
Okay, so the motion made by Mr. Jermaine is that the board grant a frontage setback variance of two feet from the Carver Zoning Bylaws, Section 2320, owing to soil conditions and topography.
I'd like to add that it's per the submitted plans.
And per the submitted plans. Thank you. And Mr. Jermaine, you made that motion, did you? And Mr. Mueller, you...
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So you got your two feet.
Thank you. Thanks for your time, everybody.
Just to give a quick recap, we'll write this up probably pretty quickly, maybe by the end of the week, and we'll submit it to the town clerk, where it'll be stamped as received. After that, you'll get a copy in the mail. Everybody on your butters list is going to get a copy, and that's a 20-day appeal period. If anyone's aggrieved by the decision, they can take it to Superior Court and sue us. Assuming that they're not, you'll be contacted by the town clerk's office to come in and get the original copy of the decision, which will be signed by all of us. You take that decision down to the Registry of Deeds over on Overe Street, and you record it. I think it's about $75. Bring a copy with you, and... because they'll keep it and mail the original back, but bring a copy with you so that they can stamp it as received, and once you get the received copy, you can take that to the Building Department. They need to see that it's recorded, so you've cleared the appeal period, it can be recorded, and everything's...
We can't move forward until we get it recorded and all of that, by the way.
Technically. You can go talk to your contractor, certainly, but we'll try and get that in as soon as we can.
Excellent.
Okay? Thank you. Thanks for your patience.
Good luck, and congratulations. Okay, let's move now to Case Number 125-9-107, the petitioner being Deborah Myers. Is she here tonight? Deborah, hi.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good. Requesting a special permit pursuant to Sections 2242 of the Carver Zoning Bylaw for property located at 13 Priscilla Mullins Way in Carver, Assessors Map 125-Lot 9-107-R, in order to operate a home-based horse-stable business in a residential agricultural district. So, Ms. Myers, we would like to hear from you at this point, if you could make us a little presentation and explain what it is that you'd like to be doing with this particular proposal.
Sure. So to start, I'd like to tell you that this business actually is already in place, and that's a mistake on my part, so...
What's already in place?
The business, the stables.
You mean you built some stables already without the permit?
Yeah, so I... that's why I'm starting there, because I wanted to apologize in advance.
How did that happen?
I was unaware that I needed a special permit, so...
Why were you unaware of that?
Ignorance, I did not know. So when I first...
Let me just interruption. I don't mean to keep doing that, and I'll let you talk without interruption in a minute, but we note in the file that you were at Town Hall quite often getting other kinds of permits.
Right.
You have in the file a board of health permit for stable.
Right.
You have an animal permit.
Yes.
You have a building permit.
Two building permits.
Two building permits. So you were down in the inspectorial office and planning department offices often.
Right.
And were these permits pulled after the stable was built, or before?
So the board of health ones were pulled before the building permit. So in October 2017, I stood in front of the building commissioner at the time and asked him. I said, "This is what I'm doing. These buildings, there's four buildings, and they were built in..." I don't own them. They were built in Maine and delivered, and they're rent-to-own buildings. I don't actually own them yet. So I stood there and spoke to him, and I said, "This is what I'm doing." I was there to get the paperwork to do the board of health permits. So I spoke to him, and he said, "You don't have to do anything because they're not your buildings. They're... you can pick them up and put them on a flatbed and move them."
Whose buildings are they?
They belong to a company called New Wayland Rent to Own out of Maine.
And there's a house on this property, right?
My house, yes.
Your house?
Yes.
And so these portable stables were delivered to your property?
Mm-hmm.
And you're paying rent?
Basically, yes.
What do you mean, basically? You're paying rent, yes, for these buildings?
Yes. It's a rent-to-own agreement.
Okay. Go ahead.
So I didn't do any further, and it's again my fault. I didn't do any further, looking into it, to ensure that I was 100% doing the right thing. In my mind, I had an approved permit to operate a stable, and that's what I was doing. So to me, I was following the rules, and the second I found out that I needed this permit, I was at the Town Hall the next morning, taking care of all the paperwork. I got all the applications. I spoke with the building commissioner at that time on what to do next, what the next steps were, and he was aware of the situation because he had set out to the property. By that point, he had approved the permits, inspected them, and signed off on them, so he was aware. And I asked him at that point, "What do I do now?" He says, "File for this permit, and then there'll be a hearing and explain the situation." And I asked him what to do next, because that because I was already operating. And he said, "You don't have to do anything," because, he said, "You can proceed as you are. We're not shutting you down or anything like that. Just make sure you get this done." So that was the first time I was aware of it, and I do apologize.
Was that the first conversation you had with the building commissioner about this?
It was the second, but it was a different building commissioner. If I understand correctly, there was an interim building commissioner somewhere on the process, and the one I spoke to in October 7, 2017 was not the same one I spoke to in June of 2019.
Okay, go ahead.
So, that being said, again, I apologize for that. I was complete ignorance. I was definitely wrong, and I did my best to make it right once I was aware that I was... that I did need this special permit. And since then, I've been in the town several times, continuing with the process and bringing all my paperwork in, and got my survey and all that stuff. So I have four buildings. Three of them contain horses. There's one building that's 12 by 24. It's two 12 by 12 stalls. There's one building that's three stalls, 10 by 10 stalls. And then there's another building that's two stalls that are 10 by 12. And then I had what I call a barn built and delivered. That was... it's our feed room, it's our tack room, it includes our hay and all that. So I had four buildings.
How big is that one?
That one's 12 by 24.
So you have one 12 by 24?
One 12 by 24. No, I have two. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Two 12 by 24.
Two 12 by 24. One houses horses, and one doesn't.
Go ahead.
So I...
Sorry.
The total square footage altogether was like 1,100 something.
Can you say that again, please? I get distracted.
The total square footage for all of the buildings?
Yep.
I did write it down. I apologize. Just give me one second to find that. It's like 1,100 square feet for the total of all four of them. 1,116 square feet if you add the square footage of all four of them. They are not positioned together. They're all separate on the property. And then the building that houses the animals have attached paddocks. Each horse has their own in and out with an attached paddock. I do also have a riding arena. It's 135 feet long by about 55 feet wide, and that's just for us to ride around and get a working horse, so it needs space to ride the horse. The board of health came out in May of 2018 before issuing my horse permits and my stable permits, and he confirmed that I was within all setbacks, that I was within compliance of all of their requirements, and then proceeded to issue the stable permit and the horse permit, which have also been renewed once since that period. So basically, the only service I offer is to board people's horses to assist in the cost, because we own a few of our own horses, and they're very, very expensive. And because I couldn't front the money to build these buildings with cash, I had to do it the rent-to-own option. So those are very expensive, and then you get the feed and the hay and the vet bills and all that for our horses. So not to mention lessons that we take at a different facility. So to offset my cost is we board horses. I currently have two boarders. They work during the... they work at night, so they come during the day. They all have contracts and agreements, but very strict. They have waivers of liability as well that they have to sign. There's a four... I think it's a three or four-page contract that has all kinds of rules and stipulations of what they can and cannot do, because this is also my home. It's not free-for-all. It's my home that I want to come home to every day, and I don't want people all over the place and stuff all over the place. We keep very good care of the animals. So the point of boarding was to offset my costs and to make... just to be a wash, really. I'm not trying to make a ton of money. I have a full-time job here in Carver, so it's really just to cover the costs of a hobby of ours. This is very, very expensive.
How many horses are you able to board at any one time?
Boarding would only be five, because I have two of my own, and I have seven stalls.
That's what I was going to ask you next.
Okay.
So there would be as many as seven at any one given time, but no more than that?
Well, theoretically, it could be as many as eight, because that's what I asked the town for when I did my board of health permit. He gave me a permit for eight. I only have seven stalls. That's my personal maximum, but I left the extra in case we wanted to get another horse for ourselves. My son rides. We had to rehome his horse because it wasn't a good fit, so there's the potential in the future that we get a horse for him, or my daughter and I want another horse, because different horses do different things. So I'm saving that extra one just in case for us, but...
How many you got in there now? Didn't you say two plus two?
Right now, I have five.
You got... well, that's not... that's not two plus two.
No, the question was how many I have.
Yeah, two, right?
I have two.
And then you have three boarding.
Three boarders.
Okay.
Two people, one person has two horses.
Got it, got it.
So, I asked, I requested eight, but the buildings I have, I can only accommodate seven. I don't, it's, I, again, I have a full-time job, I'm a single parent, I'm already running ragged, so the ability to take care of more than that is impossible. So, there's no, the max would be eight. Right now, I only have the ability to house seven, and I don't see getting another building anytime soon because they're quite extended.
Do we have a plan for this?
And they're already taking them, all of them, so...
Thank you.
So we don't offer any other services, we don't do lessons, we don't do trail riding. We trail ride because, part of the reason I chose the home was because it's literally above the forest. So, we can, it's a five-minute ride on horse down the street. There's myself and my daughter and my boarders all make sure that we pick up our manure or anything that, sometimes they go in the bathroom on the way down to the trails because it's just what they do.
What's, what's in the barn that's on the plan?
The one all the way to the left?
Yep.
That is for storage, so the, that's actually broken up into two parts. The back part next to the other set of stalls?
Yes.
Is, I believe it's 10 by 12, it might be 14 by 12. It houses hay, that side houses hay.
So when you talk about stalls, the stalls are in the stables, the barn is a separate detached structure for...
Well, they're all a detached structure.
But the barn is for storage of horse-related?
Yes.
Stuff?
Yeah, so one side has tack and grain and feed and miscellaneous items, the other side has hay. So it has two compartments internally and two separate doors.
What's the approximate size?
That building is, oh, that building's 12 by 24.
12 by 24.
And the stables?
So one of them is, one of the stalls, set of stalls is 12 by 24, and that's two stalls.
Is that the one there, for the corral?
Can I show you?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, yes, that's what I call the barn. So right about here, about 12 feet in, is the hay room on this side, and this is tack and grain. This one is 12 by 24, and there's a divider right down the middle, it's two 12 by 12 stalls. This one was a used barn I picked up that got, went, brought back to them, and it's 10 by 24. So there's two 10 by 12s in there. And this one's actually 12 by, this is, this is 10 by 30. And there's three 10 by 10 stalls in there.
So there's three?
Two.
Two.
And two.
And two.
Yeah, this one's 12 by 24.
12 by 24.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. Any other questions from board members?
Oh boy, do I have.
Mr. Jermaine, go.
So you did all this, and then all of a sudden, somebody woke you up and said, "You've got to go to zoning Board of Appeals?"
Yeah, so what happened is, there's an individual in the present that made a complaint to the town, and I went in and addressed that the day I got the letter, and spoke to them about the complaint. And he said, that's when we had that conversation, where I said, "What do I do next? What do I have to do? What do I address?" He said, "Well, you address the complaints by coming in here today. Your next step is to apply for this permit." And that's what brought it to my attention. I had no idea prior to that, but I was in there the day after I got the letter.
Are you also aware that there's 2245-C that says the maximum square footage you can have is 600 square feet on less than five acres of land? You have, by your own admission, over 1,100 square feet?
I wasn't aware of that.
So there's another issue?
But I should read that. Can you tell me that number?
2245-C. You also have a permit here for three sheds. I'm assuming those are the three other than the current permit that shows the 10 by 30? So the other sheds, the two 12 by 24s, we just considered a shed, they weren't specified out on the building permit?
I didn't call them sheds.
Well, that's what they call them. They're calling them three sheds, no more than 10 feet from the property lines, located at 13 Pacelamone's Way. This one here says you have the right to put in and install a 10 by 30, but there's no other mention of these 12 by 24s?
That should be on that first permit that says three, but it should have said state stall, stall, uh, stalls?
Oh.
Not sheds.
It doesn't.
And I apologize, that was a while ago, I don't remember specifically what I wrote.
Do these sheds, these buildings have power running in the water?
We're currently working on that now, and there is an application, there is a permit with the town by the electrician, or applied for at the town by the electrician.
Where are you getting water from?
The house, my spigot.
At the house?
Yeah.
There's no water in the barns?
We run a hose from the house to fill the water.
Okay.
Anything further, Mrs. Jermaine, at this time?
I think I'll...
Defer at the moment?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
I'm still looking. Go to someone else.
Mr. Mueller?
I'm still looking at some.
Ms. Clark?
I'll go.
There you go.
I want to go back to your process. So, at no point did anyone in town with allegedly the superior knowledge of the zoning board or the zoning bylaws stop you and say, "We're giving you a permit for eight horses. We don't care how you get them in there, we don't care what you do with them," but at no point did they say, "Are you operating a stable? Did you ever give them that information?" Did they?
Not that I recall, no. And I stood with the, when the Board of Health gentleman came out, two of the buildings were already there, but I don't, I don't recall that being a discussion, no.
And then, so when you made your application to the building inspector's office, and they came out and they must have, did they re-inspect the sheds?
Yes.
So, they've inspected them, so as far as the town was concerned, and as far as you were concerned with the town, you were permitted. You had no reason to believe otherwise?
Yeah, those are, those are not.
So I, I'm not sure that you were in error anywhere, because it's in this building and these departments who know more than you do.
Right.
And that's why people come here, is other departments, building and health and, you know, planning, they all know more than the average person, and you knew to get permits. So the Board of Health said it was, you could have a permit for up to eight horses, and they don't care, it didn't matter how you, how you got them or what you did with them?
Right, there was no discussion on whether they were going to belong to me or somebody else, or any excess of something like that.
So, and that, and that was based on your land and, I mean, we're residential agriculture, everybody can have horses and pigs and roosters and animals everywhere. So, but they gave you a permit for eight, so as far as the town is concerned, you're permitted for eight.
Right.
How do you advertise your stable?
I do have a website that I made myself, but it's mostly on Facebook, because that's where there's horse groups, where any horse person goes to find tack and boarding and things like that. So it's 99% there. And then, my website's listed on the Facebook, so I have it to have it.
And you have three boarder, boarders right now?
And three horses, but two boarders.
Two bo, two, three hor...
Yes.
Uh, three horses, but two boarders.
Right.
So you have a total of five. So you could actually have three more horses of your own?
I could.
Yeah, okay. And has the Board of Health done any re-inspection?
Not since May of 2018, no.
Okay. Do they normally, is that, Eric, do they normally?
I got December, oh, it's good through December. Yeah, I think it's annual.
The permit's good till December, so do they ever re-inspect?
I think it's annually, isn't it?
I was not contacted for a re-inspection. They, so, I got it in May of 2018, and then it's like a dog license, you have to renew it every year.
Okay.
So I renewed it in, I don't remember what month I filled it up, because it does expire in December, so maybe the October timeframe. I filled out the renewal, sent in the payment, and then I got, I, and so I think you have a copy of the current one. They issued a new one and sent it to me. But there was never a phone call or anything to come out and re-inspect, no.
And the three horses that you have now that belong to the two individual boarders, are they just ridden there, do they stop by and see them?
So currently, the woman that owns two doesn't ride at all. She comes by on Thursday afternoon. That's actually changed because she just got a second job, but for the majority of the period, she comes on Thursday afternoons between 2:00 and 2:30 and only stays for about 20 minutes. The other one comes potentially three times a week, is usually her maximum. And typically, it's, this is just on average, two days she'll ride in the arena in my yard, and one day she'll go down and do a trail ride. And that always changes depending on her schedule and weather and all that stuff. But once a week, she's heading down for a trail ride for the most part, and the other times, it's just on my property. And you can see that the, the riding arena is in the back, and it's secure, it's got plenty of seats and all that stuff.
How do you get to the trail?
I'm sorry?
How do they get to the trail?
Just down our street, so they just go up my driveway and to the right, and it's, it's maybe a five-minute walk to the, to the cul-de-sac, and then the fire access road at the end.
Into the state forest?
Yes.
Yeah. So I just want to be clear, you could be owning these horses anyway?
I could have, according to that, I could have eight of my own horses.
On that property? How long have you owned the property?
March of 2017. And the reason I bought the property was not necessarily for the boarding, because as I mentioned earlier, that came after the fact, but because it was access to horse trails and had the capability, and there was a lot of trees, we took down a lot of trees, but we had the capability and the room to have horses and give us this, this lifestyle. So that's why I chose the home.
How long you been boarding the horses?
The second, the, the most recent one came in the month of May, in October. She, she arrived in May or April with the two.
Of this year?
Yes.
So, so you had one horse for the first year?
Yeah, she was, the first one came in after I got my Board of Health permit in May of 2018. She's still with me now. And in between, I did have one for a six-month period, and I don't remember the exact dates. It was like end of 2018, beginning of 2019. It was just a trial period, because she has a place in Carver, she has her own horse, her horses at her house, and she wanted to be close to the trails to see how her horse would be. So she was maybe a six-month period with me in between the timeframe.
Okay, I'm good for it then.
Mr. Poria, anything?
I have a couple of things that I want to bring forward.
Go.
Accessory buildings under 2245, and it talks about sheds, et cetera. Under C, it says garages, tools, sheds, shops, wellhouses and the like shall not exceed a floor space of 700 square feet. Barns or buildings used to house animals or poultry shall not exceed a floor space of 600 square feet unless located on a lot greater than five acres. So I'm not sure she should have been allowed all those sheds, building farms in her backyard.
Well, I, I think she has admitted candidly that, that she wasn't given permission by anybody, she just moved them on because she didn't think that she needed any permit for that.
She has building permits for them?
For all of them?
Yeah, for all of them.
That's how, that's sort of how I'm looking at this, is I was unaware of this particular permit, and at some point, if this 600 square feet was going to come into play?
No, it's three sheds in a barn.
I wouldn't have been issued a permit. So you figure, the first one was for three buildings?
Yep.
That was already at 688 square feet?
Okay, I see that now.
So, if, if I was already at my max with the first permit, why was I issued a second permit to continue on? Not to mention they came out, inspected them, approved them, and signed off on them, which I have copies of. So, and I, I, again, I, I did make a mistake, I was in the wrong, I was unaware, complete ignorance, but in my mind, someone, that should have stopped me at some point, somebody should have said, "I can't give you another one. You're already at your max, you can't have another one."
Yeah, they were only apparently caring about where they were as far as 10 feet from the lot line. But again, they have the superior knowledge, they come out and they inspect them, they look at the plans that you give them. The inspector's office has the superior knowledge, which is the way we say it.
Right.
And he signed off on it.
I can't know what I have.
Well, you can't, yeah, I mean, you can...
I have a couple of other things.
Go ahead, Ms. Mello.
Are these on permanent foundations?
They are not, nope, because they can be moved, and at any given point, if I don't continue to pay them, they can take them back. Obviously, my goal would not be to do this, to send them all back, it's to buy them. But what I do now is I use my boarder's money to pay for the buildings, and eventually I'll own them, and I won't have to pay for them, so it's a financial benefit to me. But they, they can't be on permit structures because they have to be able to legally take them back, because I don't actually own them yet.
Okay, the other thing I just wanted to point out to the board was, the variance is being requested under section?
Special permit.
Special permit.
Yep.
Under 2242, which requires that all requirements of section 2241, 2241A, B, and G be adhered to. And as part of that, 2241B says not more than 30% of the combined floor space of the residence in any qualified accessory structure shall be used in the home occupation.
You're stealing my thunder. Keep going.
So I just think that we have to look at the total square foot, figure out...
What's the square footage of your house?
I believe it's 1,700.
That's upstairs downstairs?
Yeah, I have the, actually, I have my card with...
And the combined square footage of the outbuildings is 1,100 square feet?
1,100.
So you're way more than 30%.
And she's way over the 60?
Again, I didn't, I didn't know this information when I, when I started.
Okay.
The card?
Yep.
It's a little small.
That's fine.
Mr. Chin?
Yes, sir. Mr. Jermaine?
I actually wonder if these were readily signed off on because they're considered a non-permanent structure, so they're not taxed.
Yeah.
They're not part of the tax assessment, because they're not anchored down to the ground. They're considered nothing more than a storage shed. They could be on skids, so, because there's no, not even a pad underneath them. So I'm wondering if that might have had something to do with the building department thinking there was, since it was not a permanent structure being put together, that this fell through the cracks in some ways.
Ms. Clark, in your vast experience, have you, have you known a municipality to take that approach?
The definition becomes what is a structure. And I'd have to, we'll have to, obviously, we're going to go out there. But it become, I mean, I don't know if giving it electricity is going to turn it into a structure.
It sits on skids.
Well, we have a definition...
That's right, the, what are skids?
It sits on...
No, what are those?
Wait a minute, we have a definition under the bylaws for structure, which is anything constructed or erected, the use of which requires fixed location on the ground, including but not limited to buildings, wireless communications, facilities, equipment, swimming pools, satellite dishes, tennis courts, and the animal enclosures. Now, is this fixed, a fixed location on the ground?
No.
It may not be affixed to the land, but it is fixed on the ground, right? It's, it's there.
No, it's not anchored down, it's sitting there.
She said, she said you can pick them up and move them.
You hook your cot to it, put a chain on it, and you're not going to cross it out.
We actually did, we actually did that exactly, and my neighbors bought that. My neighbors, when they placed the third, the third set of stalls, it was crooked, my neighbor came over with Bobcat and moved it. You can literally move them. You can pick them up with the skids there if you have long enough horse.
So that may negate the 600 square foot?
2241-B.
Yeah? Yeah.
That may, I don't know, I don't know what Bob Francis was thinking. I'd like to see the property.
Well, of course.
This is a definite site visit.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments from the board at this time?
I do.
From the board first, please. Then we'll go to the public.
You have a date of December 19th. You have a date that you have to have your permit renewed by the end of this year?
It's December, it's December, yeah.
Okay, for your horses. I'd like to visit the property. How does the board feel about that instead of site visit?
Yeah.
Yep.
I'm in.
As our custom, when one member of the board...
As long as they're somebody else's.
You asked me if I liked horses. I said as long as they're somebody else's. When one member of the board asks for a site visit, we all go along with that request. It seems like all of us are interested in going out, taking a look.
Sure, absolutely.
So why don't we see what date we can do it? Typically, we do it on a Saturday morning. So what looks good for folks?
5/12, 19th, or 26th. I'm good with all of them this one.
I'm good with the 12th.
You're good with the 12th?
Yeah.
Ms. Mello?
Yep.
Everybody good for the 12th?
12th.
This Saturday.
This Saturday?
A week from Saturday.
A week from Saturday. That's a long weekend.
4:30, 5:00 a.m.?
I mean, I'm up early, feeding, so...
I like your thinking.
6?
9 o'clock?
9 o'clock.
The lawyer sleeps late, I can answer.
So 9 o'clock on October 12th for a site visit. Unlike the previous petitioner, please have that coffee and donut tray.
I got you.
Site visit, 9 a.m. at...
12.
October 12th.
13.
Now, I have one question. There's a traffic study in here. How did that get generated?
So I have cameras all over the property, and they're set to, you can change all the settings and do fancy things with them. You can record. You can do all kinds of things. So for several months before I found out the hearing date, I had had, I get notifications literally all day. And then I decided, well, you probably don't want that many months of it. And it was a lot of work on my part. So what I did, it took the two weeks before I turned in the application, and the camera is facing the road, and it has, it goes off every time there's activity. So I would get notifications all day long, and it records maybe 20 seconds of video. It records what it is so I can see it. So they're for security reasons. So every night I would go through them, and I would count, I would, like, sometimes my kid walking across the lawn or whatever, so I would take out that stuff that wasn't actually traffic. And I would count the amount of cars that went by and how many visitors I had that day. And that's how I got that information.
So this is your traffic study for the record?
This is my traffic study, yeah. I literally watched the cameras every day. My boss yelled to me, "What are you doing? Why are you looking here at home?" And I recorded all the times that I had visitors and how...
And how late are you open for business?
The visiting hours are from 8 to 7. The reason they go a little bit longer than, you know, normal professional business hours is because sometimes boarders work, and they want to come see their horse afterwards.
Do you have outdoor lighting?
I will.
What do you mean you will?
Well, the electrician, the electrician is currently, that's actively happening.
Okay.
Into the buildings?
Into the buildings.
And you have some plumbing there, too?
No.
How do you wash the horses? Just with a hose?
At the front of, next to the house, we have like a wash corral.
Yep.
And we use the hose outside.
Okay, fair enough. And the manure removal?
That, so, the Board of Health came out and checked and saw what we put on manure, and said that it had to be 200 feet from everybody's well, which it is. It's really hard to get small amounts of manure removed. It is being removed. The next debate will whether, will be whether or not we leave a container on-site for it. So I don't know if anybody is familiar with it, the amount of manure, so there's a company...
I know it smells.
It does smell.
And it attracts a lot of flies.
So we have four different types of fly control. Actually, now that you brought that up, we have, we hang fly bags, which actually work very well. Our property gets sprayed for mosquitoes three or four times a year, depending on what the season is. And when they're sprayed for mosquitoes, it actually kills most of the bugs. It includes the fries, flies. So for a two-week period, before they recycle, those are gone. Then we also have what we call, oh my gosh, I forgot the name of it. They're by Spalding Labs. Well, they're called fly controllers. And then the minuscule flies that burrow holes and the flies dung, or whatever you want to call it, to keep them from producing more. And the last one is we just fly spray all the horses consistently. So we do do our best with the flies.
All right. Let me ask you this question. Neighbors, you have neighbors in the back, do you? What separates your yard from where the neighbor's yard begins?
Trees.
Trees. You have a tree line back there. What about on the sides of your property?
Trees, except for one property that has a very slim tree line. So I didn't clear my entire property. I left trees on all sides, but one property has, is a very, very slim tree line. I didn't do anything on that side.
There's a front door here, right?
Yep.
Okay. All right. I'm done with my questions for the time being. Let me ask the public if they have any questions or comments that they'd like to make with regard to this petition. Anything at all?
I do.
All right. Your name and address, please.
My name's Jonathan Dunn. I live at 11 Priscilla Mullins.
Yes, sir.
Harbor, Mass.
Nice to see you, Jonathan.
Nice to be here. Again, I don't have any problem with, personally, or horses. I like them. You know what I mean? With my neighbors, I try and get along. But when she moved in there, she cleared the whole property, everything. There's not a stitch or tree anywhere. It's all sand. And then she got those sheds, started putting them in, and no, like you said, no water, no electricity for the horses, kind of rickety fencing put up for corrals. It's right beside my house.
I was just going to ask you, you're on the same side of the street. You're one of the director butters, right?
I'm right beside her.
Yep.
I'm 11. She's 13.
If you're looking at this drawing, where are you? You over here, or you over here?
Um, it's a house.
The house is right here.
I'm right here.
You're on this side?
Yep.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Dunn.
So anyways, I came down to Town Hall quite a few times and asked about the property, what they were doing. They were told, you were pets. You had horses for pets. That's what she was applying for the permit for, pets. Not boarding horses, none of that. I know, well. So anyways, that's, I just...
So your objection specifically is what?
It's a residential...
Residential neighborhood, and you think this operation has gotten too big?
Well, it's a business. We don't know, because when we first came up here...
What is your name?
I'm sorry, I'm Laurie. I live at 11 Priscilla Mullins.
You're Laurie Dunn?
Yes. And when we came up here, she hadn't, didn't get any permits. And then we came again, and they said, "Oh, she just came in," like the day after we were there asking about the permits. And then when we were talking about the sheds, they said, "Oh, well, we better send somebody out there to look," which is when they did.
Right.
And so we just started to...
Then they discovered sheds.
But then they saw the website, which is, this is people that have commented and yelled. It's not just on Facebook. She does own a website. And it says that they bought up to eight horses. So I'm like, well, that's fine, but can, is there a limit? Like, can it be 20 eventually?
I know she's going to keep asking for more. There's only...
Well, she's limited right now per the terms of the permit to eight.
There's only an acre and a half of land. And like he was saying, you need five acres for...
And we were told she was going to have the, you know, removed. That's what they told us at Town Hall. She's telling me somebody come and remove the manure. Did they say that she was going to sell him?
She said she was selling it to get rid of it. But again, then I came down, when I saw the website, and said, "She's starting a business." There's a business there. It's not... Anyways, it's, it's very close quarters. The smell is very bad. I don't know if you've had horses, but I've had them growing up. And it's a lot of work.
Okay. So I think what you're saying, if I can recapitulate, is you feel that this operation has turned into a business that is too large for this neighborhood and too intrusive, particularly given your close proximity?
Yes.
Right? And that you object to the smell and the general operation of the business as you've come to understand it? Is that fair?
Yes. And again, it's nothing personal. And I like horses, and I don't have any problem with the neighborhood. I don't.
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
Hi, I'm Tom Hyland. I live at 18 Priscilla Mullins Way.
Go ahead.
As far as I'm concerned, I mean, I don't know much about the bylaws and stuff like that, but I don't think that this operation really changes the character of the neighborhood or anything. I love all my neighbors. I'm the way of the time I go by. So I mean, I'm as far as her removing manure and stuff like that, I think it's more than some of the other neighbors. I mean, there's got to be about four other horse properties in the neighborhood, which I think some of them are even bigger than what she has. I think the one right next to me is pretty, pretty big.
I don't think they only have like two horses.
One person at a time.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
That's not a business.
But I mean, I, I mean, it's, I think she's trying to do right by the permits and everything. You know, she is looking for expertise at Town Hall, and sometimes it can be difficult to navigate those on your own. But I mean, like you said, I mean, I don't think it changes the character. I really don't see the traffic. I'm not there, truthfully, I'm not there most days. I work from home Mondays and Fridays, I mean, Wednesday, Fridays. And I don't really see the traffic there, but I'm also not poking my head out around the corner to see it all the time. But I would notice it because, I mean, we're a pretty tight-knit neighborhood, and people complain about people's dog barking, and, you know, kids driving down the street too fast, things like that, normal neighborhood stuff. I think if there was an increase in traffic, right, that I'm not in, I'm not exactly embodying her, I'm a few houses down, so.
Great. Thanks for your comments. Who else would like to have something to say? Yes, ma'am.
Donna Faurin, 2017, South Mountain Village.
Yes, Donna.
I lived in town an awful long time, and I, too, had horses. I would, if I could ask a question of the owner?
Sure.
Or do I have to address you?
Yeah, address it to me first.
Okay. I like, I would assume that she has staff and hands there that are taking care of the horses.
She's it. She's it.
Okay.
One-person operation. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, just that.
Okay. Who else would like to be heard? I see no one else raising their hand, and I thank each of you who have commented for your observations. We will let the petitioner make closing remarks based only on what you've just heard from the three people who have allowed to speak.
In regards to Mr. Dunn, he, I did start this process in October 2017, and I did go over and speak with him in his driveway in October 2017. And I stated what I was doing, and I asked him about the property lines. And one of the comments he made to me was that he hated horses because he had to take care of them his entire life by himself, and they were a burden. So these complaints did not come as a surprise. In regards to, and I said to him, "If you have any problems," I said, "This is what I'm doing. I'll walk you around." I said it to all of my neighbors. "I'll walk you around." It actually particularly fell on the weekend that I was taking the trees down. So part of the reason I was talking to my neighbors about it was because it was going to be noisy. We had two days of clearing trees. So as a courtesy, I talked to my neighbors and said, "We're going to have some noise. I apologize just for the weekend. This is what I'm doing. I'm more than happy to show you around, show you what I'm doing." And I said, "If you have any questions or issues, don't hesitate to knock on my door." And he said, "Don't worry, I will." Eight, nine months later, I get a call from the Town Hall. So to clarify, I did not clear my entire lot. That did not happen. You have the survey. My entire lot was not cleared. I still have 24 feet from one of the buildings on his side, 12 feet from one of the buildings on the other side, and about 30, 40 feet in the back. I did not entirely clear the lot.
What else you got?
In regards to the rickety fence, I mean, that's just a matter of opinion. The fence that's closest to him was professionally done by a neighbor of ours who owns, or works for a fencing company. They are, they spend a lot of materials, a lot of money on the fencing. The only part that's rickety is in the front because, and it's in the picture, you can see. You guys have a picture of my house. When you drive by, you cannot see that there's a horse stables business back there. If you look all the way to the, depending on how you're looking at it, all the way to the side, there's a fence that's sort of tipsy. And the reason it's like that is because the ground slopes down so much, and I was trying to make the fence match the rest of the thing. But that's, that's just how it looks. I mean, it'll be fixed eventually, but I have a full-time job in business and all that stuff.
A final comment?
I do actually have some other letters for you.
Some what letters?
Letters in regards to people who couldn't be here today. Three of them, four of them are from, three of them are from my neighbors stating that they also have no problem with the stables.
Okay, we'll make those part of the file.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Mars. Okay. So in response to what you just said, and we're not going to turn this into a ping-pong match tonight, Mr. Dunn obviously has the right to express his opinion before this board. And the board appreciates the input that it gets from members of the public and takes all of these comments into consideration in its decision-making process. You know, he may see things one way, and you may see things a different way. This is why the board conducts site visits.
Yeah.
So that we can make an independent judgment. You're not independent because you're the one that's proposing this project, and Mr. Dunn isn't independent either because he's a director butter.
Right.
Both of you have strong opinions, and they're, in some respects, diametrically opposed opinions. So we will go out, we'll make an assessment, we'll look around the neighborhood, and we will be meticulous in doing so. And then we will reconvene in roughly a month or so.
Okay.
And we'll take this up again, and hopefully at that time be prepared to reach a decision on the merits.
Okay.
Do we want to set a date for next meeting?
Yes, we want to set a date. So that date was October 12th, wasn't it, for the site visit?
The site visit.
And for the next meeting, I'm thinking maybe towards the end of October or the very beginning of November.
Do October 29th as a Tuesday?
No, no. Well, let's see.
It's five weeks from now.
The 29th?
Yeah, Tuesday first.
So it probably shouldn't go out any longer than that.
The 22nd is a Tuesday?
We also have other cases that we have to have on the time ticker, too.
Right. So 22nd or 29th would be the two options.
I'm going to 29th.
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 Everybody good on the 29th?
Yep.
Same time, 7 p.m.?
Yeah.
Yes. So do I...
And you won't, you won't get another notice? There won't be a mailing? This is your notice?
Okay.
Or it's on the meeting schedule on the Town Hall websites, or it's a public notice? The only other thing I might add about lot clearing is that I can take down every tree in my yard if I want to. Everybody, everybody can. So...
I agree, but do you have to have it surveyed or anything like that?
Nope. I mean, you have, you have a lot survey, you have a plan. She has a recorded plan. You have a recorded plan.
But there's no markings that tells you, you can guess by picture?
That's up to the person taking the chance.
Mr. Dunn's...
But you can have every lot in your yard taken down.
I don't know.
You can. As long as you're right.
My next-door neighbor doesn't even have a twig.
Yeah.
I do want to ask you this question directly before we move on, and we have another case we have to get to. I want you to tell this board, look at this board, and tell us whether you have any plans to sell this property within the next three years.
Oh, God, no. No, this was supposed to be our, our forever home. My kids still have, my son just started sixth grade, and my daughter just started freshman year of high school.
So you have two kids in the school system here?
Right. So the soonest, the soonest I would even consider selling is when my son graduates. So we moved from menubar to Plymouth to Carver. So I was renting a townhouse and said, "You know what? I'm ready to buy a house. I'm grown up. I'm doing it by myself." So I bought a house in Plymouth. The house in Plymouth was a very small house on the forward side of things, where it's really super, super close to my neighbors, and it wasn't comfortable. I've worked in Carver since 2011, and I've loved Carver. So I said, "I want to plant roots in Carver. I like this small town. This is where I want to be." And so I started looking in Carver. And I found this house. It was perfect for horses. It was perfect for my family. It's a dog-friendly neighborhood. I have dogs. Better license, by the way. And it was important to me, this house was important to me for the neighborhood, the trails, the land, the people in Carver.
Okay, we got it. We got it.
Yeah. So no, not for, not for at least six years.
All right. So do I hear a motion to continue this hearing to the date of October 29th?
So...
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And do I also hear a motion to conduct a site visit on October, what date did we decide? I'm sorry.
12.
12th.
I'll make that motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So we have two dates. October 12th to come and visit you at 9 o'clock, and October 29th to reconvene in this room at 7 o'clock.
Okay. Understood.
All right.
All right. Thank you so much for your time.
Nice to see you, and thanks, everybody, for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark, you come to those, too.
Yeah, you can come to these sites.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bye-bye.
You guys have all the fun.
That's right.
Come see somebody else's horses.
All right. The case which has generated a lot of attention in town... Is the last case on our agenda for this evening. Mr. Germaine, could you withdraw?
I could.
Mr. Poria, could you move over to your left and assume Mr. Germaine's chair? Where's my amendment? Oh, here it is. This is public hearing on case number 52-1. It's a continued case. Petitioner being Cape Way Cannabis, Inc., requesting a variance pursuant to Article 27, zoning by law changes, Section 5,000.5, Subparagraph 2, which is titled Location and Dimensional Controls. This is to allow a non-medical marijuana establishment within 500 feet of a religious facility. The property is located at 316 Tremont Street in Carver, which has had assessors map 127 Lot 8-0-R in a general business district. Now, before we get going on this, I have a few comments that I'd like to make from the chair. The zoning board of an appeals is an appellate board. What I mean by that, ladies and gentlemen, those watching on TV, is that a preliminary decision with regard to this petition has already been made by planning personnel in the town hall. As a result of that decision, where they found that this could not be, this particular project could not be permitted because of the existence of this particular bylaw that I just referenced, the matter was sent to us on appeal, so that we could make a decision about whether this bylaw should be enforced as is, or whether there's something unusual or distinctive about this property with regard to its shape, soil, or topography that would allow us to break the relevant bylaw and grant the requested relief. So this is, in essence, an appeal that's being taken from the preliminary decision made by the planning folks in town hall. I want to tell everybody and reassure everybody that none of us who are sitting here as voting members tonight have had anything to do with that preliminary decision in town hall. This is a very independent board, and it guards its independence jealously from the workings of what happens in town hall. I don't mean to cast aspersions on anybody, it's just the way this system is set up. We get these appeals from people who have been turned down, for whatever reason, by the folks in the planning department, and it may be for a very good reason that they've been turned down, or it might not be. So we sit in judgment of that decision, and are charged with making an independent decision. We sit, in essence, ladies and gentlemen, as five judges, just as a judge in court would sit and make a decision about what he or she is hearing in an appeals court, we do the same here. And we are charged with the responsibility of issuing written decisions based upon our judgment once it finally goes to vote. So I just want everybody to understand the process, first of all, that this board is expected to go through, and because this is sort of a charged issue, this issue of non-medical marijuana facilities in any town, not just Carver, I want to remind everybody that the fact that a non-medical marijuana facility is being requested in this case, and probably in others that will come before this board, we now know that based upon a vote of the population in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, non-medical marijuana facilities are allowed for possession of small amounts for personal use, for those people who want to purchase from non-medical marijuana facilities. We are long past, long past any discussion about whether this is appropriate social policy or not, and we're not going to get into that tonight. That horse has already left the barn. We now know what the state law is, it's allowed. So the question is whether this particular project, based upon its specifics, and most especially with regard to the dimensional issue that this project raises, whether there is something compelling about the shape, the topography, or the soil of this particular location that would allow us cover to break the local bylaw and allow the petition to go through. So that's where we are with this, that sort of sets up the game plan here, right? That's, that's, that's the arena in which we're playing. So having said that, I observe Mr. Angley, my brother at the law and an esteemed member of the bar, is here to talk on behalf of the petitioner. Is that true? So I turn this meeting over to you for a brief period, Mr. Angley, so you can address us.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Ed Angley, and I represent the petitioner, which is Cape Way Cannabis, Inc. I have Kevin Howe, who's principal, I have a chalk, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have used that. I have a, it's from the town's...
I know what you're talking about.
It's from the town's site, and with your permission, I put it up.
Yes.
I also have a brief presentation in writing, which has a reduced copy of that plan, which I would ask, if you allow, to turn, to distribute to you. Before I interrupt myself during the meeting, I just wanted to point out that there are two places in the site that are within, they have 500-foot radiuses around them. There's Little Red Smokehouse, which has Little Crusaders Nursery School. My two granddaughters went there, that's why I know what it is. And down here, we have the church, the 500-foot radius, and you have this with a radius there.
So let's just set this up for everybody. The bylaw, Mr. Angley, states that there has to be at least 500 feet setback from a religious facility.
Yes.
And this particular project...
And a school.
And a school, and I think a couple of other things as well, but in this particular case, we're talking about a religious facility, most especially.
Yes.
And that religious facility is 250 feet away, or give or take, rather than the 500, which is required by the bylaw. Hence the problem, the dimensional issue that you come to us with.
Yes.
Go ahead.
So, the matter before the board is the petition of Cape Way Cannabis, Inc., for a variance for location and dimensional controls contained in Section 5,000.5, Subparagraph 2, of the recently approved zoning bylaw change. When the petitioner stated out to acquire a location within the two districts, within the two districts where retail licenses would be permitted, they consulted with Steve Cole in the planning department and searched for a location. At that time, the draft bylaw required a zero-foot separation from religious facilities. Petitioner found a location at 316 Tremont, which was suitable and was approximately 300 miles from, it's 250, thereabouts, from the property line of a church at 307 Tremont Street, which had been inactive at the site, but later had a re-creant opening. When Article 27 came up to town meeting floor, the wire distance was changed to 500 feet. The state law regulating the location of cannabis facilities does not regulate the distance from places of worship, only schools. That distance is 500 feet from a school. Carver has limited the number of recreational cannabis facilities to two. As the zoning is written, I believe that it's planned to have one facility in North Carver and one in South Carver. Obviously, the facility has to be zoned for business. As I said, I have the markup of the areas showing where the church is located, where a daycare center, Little Red Smokehouse site is located.
Just two quick points for everybody. This area is business zoned, is that true? And can you point to us where the church is located, and where the daycare center is located, and where the proposed project would be?
There's the church.
So the church is here?
Yes.
The proposed project is here?
Yes, across the street.
Across the street.
Yep.
And the smoke, Little Red Schoolhouse or Smokehouse, where that plaza is, is here.
Okay. And how many feet away from the Little Red Smokehouse school is the proposed project?
Oh, a thousand, more, because a couple thousand.
So well within the bylaw?
Oh, yes, yeah.
The issue is the church across the street?
It is.
It is.
Go ahead, Mr. Angley.
As it stands, at this moment, there is no location zoned for business in the South Carver designated for recreational cannabis use, which is available at 500 feet from either school or church. This is the fourth cannabis case that I have worked on, three of them are there. I state that because in the course of preparing for these cases, I reviewed many cannabis control commission matters. The CCC has not yet overturned local zoning based on location, but has indicated that it will for a community which has voted to allow recreational cannabis, but creates zoning for cannabis, which in effect zones it out. In this case, Carver may have inadvertently done so.
And why do you say that?
Because there's no, there's no site available at the moment, I mean, at least to him. He's the only person who's applied for anything. Because you've taken out almost all the places that you can actually do it.
In South Carver?
In South Carver.
But not all the places.
What about North Carver?
But not all the places.
I haven't gone through every one of them one by one, but I'm mistaken in making a general statement that's pretty much rule him on any place in South Carver. And I have imagined a lot of people have the same problem in trying to find a facility...
I mean, in view of the school and the religious facility being located nearby, is that what you're saying? Go ahead.
I'm fully aware of the requirements for a variance, it's not easy. In this case, we do have circumstances relating to shape or topography of such land structures. Shape is one of the definitions, shape in one of the definitions from the West Canada Dictionary Dictionary is the quality of a thing that depends on the relative position of all points composing this outline for external surface, physical or special form. In this matter, the relative position of the proposed site at 316 Tremont and the church at 307 Tremont is a circumstance relating to shape. Topography has been defined as the arrangement of the natural and artificial physical features of an area. In this matter, the arrangement of the artificial physical features building is a circumstance relating to topography.
Let me stop you there for a second. How is a building an artificial physical feature?
It's an artificial structure, it's a physical feature.
Go ahead.
I didn't say it was a piece. But in all my years, it doesn't have to be that big, it just has to be something. These circumstances are especially affecting such a amount of structures, but do not generally affect the zoning district in which it's located, as there's only one church in the area zoned for retail cannabis.
Where did you pick up your definition of topography, Mr. Angley?
I pulled it out of the same letters.
Go ahead.
I think that's where I pulled that off, maybe with Black's Law Department. It was so long ago, I can't remember, two months ago. Under these circumstances, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the bylaw when it involves substantial hardship, financial, otherwise, to the petitioner, the petitioner will be unable to operate a retail store, and substantial sums of money parties expended will be lost. But upon not a party to this petition, the town of Carver will lose the opportunity to collect substantial revenue. In one scenario, it was projected for a retail shop complement to this one, that the 3% annual sales tax payable to the town would be $415,500 yearly for the life of the business. Additionally, the 3% annual community impact fee for five years could result in at least the same revenue as the sales tax, or a total of $831,000 annually.
That's a lot of smokers.
It is, it's a lot of money. I don't, I don't know what your cost, because I've never purchased marijuana legally or illegally.
You said in one scenario, and then you, you went through this with us.
Well, I...
What scenario?
Coming from, I just recently finished a case in Plymouth, which we had a similar-sized retail.
And you extrapolated from that one to this one?
Extrapolated from that, was the figures that they had come up with.
Go ahead.
The desirable leaves may be granted without a substantial detriment to the public good. The town has passed the bylaw, making determination that would not pose a substantial detriment, and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intended purpose of the bylaw, the church in question only has services on Sunday ending around noon time. The Carver bylaw hardly prohibits sales up until 12:00 PM on Sunday, for the foregoing reasons we feel a variance should be made.
Thank you, Mr. Angley.
No, I didn't mean to cut it out.
I get your argument, you're basically making, I think, your stronger argument on shape, somewhat on topography, not anything to do with soil.
No.
Okay. So again, for those listening here tonight and at home, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, requires that in order for a variance from a local bylaw to be granted, there must be something distinctive or unusual about the particular property, which is the subject of the petition, in regards to its shape, soil, or topography, and that it would be a substantial detriment to the petitioner if the requested variance were not granted by the local board, based on any one or a combination of those three things, shape, soil, or topography. So as I understand it, Mr. Angley makes the argument that due to the shape of the property, as well as the topography of the property, and in view of the money already expended, that there would be substantial detriment to this petitioner if the petition were not allowed and the variance not granted. And again, we're talking about the need for roughly 250 feet from the church which operates in that area, because they only have 250-foot worth of setback rather than the 500, which the bylaw requires. Have I set that up for your client correctly, Mr. Angley?
Correct.
Okay. Members of the board, questions, comments?
What can you tell me at least about the building? Where, what building is this?
It's from Timeless Stone Works.
So it, it is the building?
It is that building, stay away.
So is Timeless Stone Works going out?
They're going to continue to do manufacturing in the back of the property, and they're, at this time, and we're not speaking for the owner of that property, but they're moving some retail stuff around if they get a location.
Is the owner of the property here?
No, it's not.
So the, the actual applicant is not here?
Well, I'm the, well, Cape Way Cannabis is the applicant.
Okay, but the, but the owner of the property is who?
We have a lease with, with Timeless Stone Works.
With Timeless Stone Works?
Mm-hmm.
And do they own the property?
Yes, they do.
And the applicant on the petition is a Lori...
Howe, that's my wife.
Howe.
I'm representing her, she couldn't be good, see?
So you would be in the front of that building?
Yes. When we first spoke to Mr. Cole about this, we brought this property up, we looked at it, we looked at the map and everything else, and he said there was plenty of room to be able to split that property where there's already a fence closing off the area that does the manufacturing of granite, and that, and he said it would be a very feasible piece of property, and at that time, again, there were no setbacks for religious, and that's why we...
But the zero is a placeholder for...
Because the state, he was going by, the state doesn't regulate, and so most communities have just adopted the state regulation.
Well, I don't know about that, and I'm not sure that I would accept that.
What about that? Several communities have some, I don't, I told you to do the math on it, but I think it might be more than that, but I don't know.
Ms. Clark.
So they have, like, a big metal building, is it?
Yes.
Just a, like a space building?
Correct.
And you would be inside that?
No, we would be in the, the structure out on the front, on the street.
Oh, there's, there's another structure, so there's two structures on that property?
Yes.
Okay, now I'm lost. Okay, so there's...
Is that the place where they had the, we used to have, we had the showroom, where we would go in and look at samples and...
Yes.
Okay.
The numbers are...
Are they still in that building right now?
They're in the car area, yes.
Yeah, that's one right there.
Gotcha.
That's what I'm going to make a point about, this building, the renovation under the state cannabis regulations.
That's correct.
Once they go for the state license, they are unbelievable regulations. They have to have security that you can't believe. It goes on for age after age, it's exceptionally expensive.
And that also, there's some other, there's one other location where there's a strip mall, where there's a Dunkin' Donuts, and when we looked at that and we conferred with the cannabis control commission, they didn't give us anything in writing that said that that wouldn't be an acceptable location, because it needs to have a clear entrance on it and everything else. So that also, you know, brings into that, there isn't a lot of facilities in that area that would be acceptable by this, by the cannabis control commission.
How do you know this one would be?
Because...
You're surmising?
I'm surmising, but they've approved others that are similar to this, this freestanding location has parking front of it and everything else, so it's typical of what they do approve.
But how does the retail space not meet that?
Because the entrance to it, and you have to walk into that courtyard, and they like it to be a wide-open entrance for security reasons and those types of things, they don't like to co-locate them in a lot of things unless it's in the city where they really can't, but they prefer to have them freestanding buildings. We had an off-the-cuff conversation with them, and when we were selecting and looking, and they said, this would be a better... and they said this would be a better...
You can't have anything visible from outside.
Yes, as far as...
Just no product signage. You can have only one sign, the size of a face. You can't have any marijuana leaves on it, just one sign.
The words. The words.
But part of your argument is that Carver doesn't offer any space that doesn't, that's outside the 500-foot radius? And you're just telling me about one that's nearby, but you don't think an off-the-cuff discussion says that it wouldn't meet what they have previously approved?
Yes, that's why we, that's why we selected this.
Well, and what I'm saying is part of your argument is that South Carver doesn't have...
And I don't think anything available in that closet also.
Well, I don't know that. Okay, I'm good. We are going, right?
We're jumping ahead here a little. Go ahead, Ms. Miller.
Do you know how, how much distance from the church to the southern border of town along 58, and how much distance from 500 feet outside the church to 500 feet outside to the next? You're the one who brought up Little Red Smokehouse, which to me has nothing to do with this site, because it's, I don't know, a half mile up the road?
Yep.
The reason I brought it up is that it is zoned for the same stuff, and you took out a whole group of area and buildings that would have been available.
I want to know how much distance is available, not what isn't available, but along this southern corridor of 58, if you draw the 500 foot around the church and you draw the 500 foot around the nurse recol, what is the difference, distance? Is it two miles?
No. No, I've been speculating.
But as you can see by the circles, it's here to here.
And then the 500 feet going further south to the Wayham line, because that's all along that corridor also?
I don't know what that number is back there. I don't, there's, it's a lot of fog and in wetland, so I'm not even sure.
But that's what the bylaw covers.
If you'd like to continue, I'll find out.
Well, that would be one of my questions, maybe, for the next meeting.
What else you got, Ms. Miller, for now?
That's it, for the moment.
Mr. Mueller.
I'm good for now.
Ms. Clark.
I'm good for you.
Mr. Poirier. I'm just listening here. I'm struggling with the 40A arguments that you're making. I know you pull these from Webster's or Black's Law Dictionary, but typically, when we think about shape on this board, we're thinking about the outlines of a property that are unusual, not a perfect square or something that's close to that, but something unusual about the four corners, even if maybe some of these properties don't have corners that we look at. So can you talk to me about the shape of the lot as it exists currently? It looks kind of square-ish to me, based on the map. Am I right, or am I looking at that wrong?
I have to think about it for a moment.
Okay.
Well, this is an alternative way of looking at that. You've got one of the definitions, is that shape is the quality of a thing.
I see that you've quoted that, and I heard...
Another alternative way of looking at it.
Okay. But again, typically, the board, or at least this member of the board, looks at a project when the issue of shape comes up, and we want to kind of see if there's something odd about the configuration of the lot itself. So I ask you again, can you characterize the current configuration of that property where this proposed project would be located, Mr. Angley? Is it square? Is it triangular? Is it octagonal? What would you say that shape is?
Well, it's basically square or tip on it.
Okay. And insofar as the topography argument, and again, these are important 40A arguments under state law, when we think about topography, at least this board member, and I think the rest of us probably would agree, we're thinking about things like drop-offs of property or property that rises in an unusual or unexpected way, as opposed to the topography in neighboring lots. So can you tell me whether the lot in this case is flat or sloped at all or raised at all in any way, shape, manner, or form?
As flat as can be.
So flat topography?
Outside the block.
Okay. So flat topography and basically a square lot. Would that be a fair characterization? And you're bringing, and you're answering yes, right? Yes? But you're bringing up these definitions as an alternative to our traditional approach of viewing shape as the configuration of the four corners of the lot, if it has corners, and topography generally being assumed to be something having to do with elevation.
I am.
Okay. And I struggle with that, I tell you honestly, because this is a departure from how this board member has previously looked at topography and shape.
Life is a series of changes.
Yes, it is, as my kids frequently point out to me, especially my daughter, who does the same thing you and I do.
I have all of them pointing out to me.
Does everybody follow this argument up here, this discussion? Does anyone else have anything they want to say at this time before we ask for public All right, so we will now defer to the public, and I ask, first of all, if there's anyone here representing the church, which has been mentioned to be within the 250 feet that we've been talking about. Your name, sir?
My name is Pastor Barry Hanson.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for having me.
And where do you live?
307 Tremont Street, on the said property across the street.
Okay. And you're the property that, or the, that, is the church in your, in your house?
No, we have a parsonage on that property.
So the parsonage is located on the same property where you have your residential building, your residential home?
Our home is on the same piece of property as the church structure.
Okay.
Within the 500-foot.
Actually, 250 feet away from where they want to be.
Our actual residence is within the 500-foot as well.
Yeah, I think it's here's the church, here's his house.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes, sir.
Go.
So unaware of the nature of the request for the variance, our only request would be that this board consider the nature of Carver Town Government, in the sense that it is one of the few towns in Commonwealth that has town meeting. And at town meeting, the majority of residents voted for this bylaw, and to grant their variance would be in contradiction to the majority of the vote of town meeting, which is essentially opposition, is to, for this board to uphold the decision of town meeting in regards to the 500-foot setback.
Thank you. And let me interject here for a moment.
Certainly.
This may or may not bring you any feeling of solace, but this board is the only board in the town of Carver which has the legal authority to break a bylaw that has been voted on by town meeting.
Sure.
The only board. The Board of Selectmen can't do it, the Planning Board can't do it, we're it. So the buck stops with us. And sometimes we have to make very hard decisions, realizing, of course, that town meeting has already spoken. We respect that. We respect the bylaws with which we are given to work, but we also understand that under state law, we do have the legal authority to break those bylaws if certain conditions are shown, which is why I just went through with Mr. Angley, the questions about shape and soil and topography. Those have to be distinctive before we can even begin to think about breaking a bylaw. Okay? So I hope, again, that explanation assists you in understanding this a little bit better.
That brings me a great amount of solace in this situation, because there is no objectionable topography or dimensions, as you just spoke about, that would make this unique in any stretch of imagination.
Okay. I do have a question for you, and I probably am anticipating questions from other board members about this, but an allegation has been made by the petitioner that the church that you are the pastor of had been inactive for a period of time at this site where they want to locate their cannabis facility. Is that true or false?
To my knowledge, we became pastors at this location five years ago, and at which point, there was no congregation present. So it has been a church for as long as the building has existed, but there was a period of inactivity before I arrived. So since the founding of the church, I'm not exactly sure of the year, it's 1970s, that this church came into existence in this town.
Let's spin forward from the '70s. When did you first generate a congregation after you moved to the property? And when you developed a congregation in 2014, how many people did that congregation consist Roughly?
I would say 30 folks.
And what's the size of your congregation now?
We, that's an interesting question.
People come and go, do they?
So a membership rule, if you're asking, I believe it's 105.
And you give sermons, I take it, on Sunday mornings? Is that true?
I do.
How many people were at your last sermon?
We had 49.
And the week before?
It fluctuates in the 40s.
Give us a range, low to high.
40 to 50.
Okay. Thank you.
We also conduct services other than on Sunday.
And when are those services conducted?
We have services on Friday, Thursday. We have from time to time on Saturday.
So there's a lot of praying going on in this building, right?
Yes.
We all need to do more of that.
I agree.
You do weddings in there?
We do. We have children's church, where children congregate, the same children that would attend our school system here in Carver, they attend our church. Same reason somebody would want a variance from a daycare.
It sounds like between 40 and 50 regular congregants. Is that fair?
Yes.
Roughly, how many of those are residents of the town of Carver? Ballpark it for me.
Half.
Thank you. Who else would like to be heard? Yes, ma'am?
I do, but...
Donna Forant.
Donna Forant.
Address?
278 Tannen Village.
I should have it memorized, because you told us the first time.
Yeah. So my concern is, I've done a lot of research, and I looked into Hudson, Mass., Bolton, Mass., and what's gone on up there, and they did have a dispensary built in Hudson, and some of the problems they had was the traffic, the parking, and they wanted to add on to that building to make a recreational dispensary, so they had a medical dispensary. So now, my concern is, we allow the variance and both they want to add on to that building, now we're possibly going to be a little bit more closer to the church. So that's my concern, number one. And then number two is, where is the parking going to be for this facility, because there's no place to park there? And number three, the traffic. I actually was in Hudson, Mass., at a dispensary, and I observed, like, 100 people within an hour and a half going into the dispensary. They were brought in by van loads, and they have the same...
Vans would go in?
Yeah, they would bring the people in.
People would disembark?
Yeah, and they would leave and go get more and bring them back. They had a police officer doing the traffic, and the setup is almost identical to 495, how close we are to the highway. Their setup in Hudson, if you look, it's actually a little bit more closer to the highway. Hudson came in and made them build another parking system, because one that they had installed just fell apart. Bolton, Massachusetts, they had a similar situation with the parking, and then they had zoning issues as well. My concern, I happen to actually attend the church in Carver, and I'm not speaking on behalf of the church, I'm speaking on myself as a resident in the town. My concern is, for instance, my husband walks to church every single Sunday. He's seven miles there and seven miles back. We're going to have people go into a dispensary, we have bicycle, we don't really have a bicycle lane in Carver, so my concern is the people driving and smoking marijuana, and then we have, and I'm not saying they're going to drive...
Well, you can't smoke when you're driving.
Right, I know, but you know what can happen. So my concern basically is safety, traffic, and what happens down the road if they want them to be closer.
Let me just say this. Thank you for your comments. You have sat through the previous hearing, and it is our practice, when we have concerns about specific issues where we intend to grant either a special permit or a variance, many times to attach conditions. These conditions would be pertinent to such issues as the ones that you raised, like parking and traffic and lighting and hours of operation. Now, having said this, I don't mean to betray any prejudice, one way or another, yet, on the merits of this case. What I'm saying is that all of these issues can be addressed, and often are addressed, in our decisions. So I recognize your concern, as I think all the other board members do. You're very well spoken and articulate, and thank you for offering your input to us this evening.
You're welcome. I have one more comment.
Yep.
Down the road, within this zoning that you had there, the Gibbs property sold within the last three years, and I think that property was over 100 acres possibly, I might have my acreage wrong. My thought was, like, why didn't they go after that property?
Where is that Gibbs property on this map, Ms. Forant?
At the solar field.
Was it?
Is it the solar field?
I don't know.
So this is, it's down here.
Yeah, yeah.
It's down here.
Is it within the...
It's within the zoning.
It's within the district?
Yeah, and it's closer to Wayham, and it was a lot...
Isn't there a solar field there?
No, there's, I don't...
I don't think you can see it. Make peace. Was it make peace?
It's the property that goes from Tringmont Street all the way over to Wayham Street. Actually, my family had cranberry businesses down there. There was...
So you're, you're...
...opened in property that could have been...
You're telling the board that there are other alternative locations that would not run afoul of the dimensional requirements of the current zoning bylaw for non-medical marijuana facilities?
I am not an attorney, I'm paralegal, but I'm not a land expert, so I can't answer that question. But there is a possibility that you could look at that.
Has the petitioner looked at these alternative pieces?
We have, and this, when we started this conversation with the town of Carver back in probably November, December of last year.
Yes, sir.
So that's when it started.
Yes, sir.
So in that time, we started to, you know, put some... So in that time, we started to, you know, put some resources out and look at different areas. Buying a hundred acres, I don't, I mean, it's not reasonable.
How about a couple?
It's sold several years ago, and at that time, it was not for sale.
Is it for sale now?
I don't, I don't know. I don't believe so. We have been keeping our eye...
It's uplands, isn't it? Isn't it all uplands?
I believe so.
It's not, it's landlocked, isn't it?
Yeah, I think so.
But you're leasing, you're looking to lease the space from...
Yes, at this time, we're looking to lease, and there's talk with the option to purchase it.
Okay.
And she mentioned another piece of property. Do you know about that one?
No, I don't know. I mean, I can tell you, we've looked at all the properties up there, we looked at all the properties up on the north end as well.
Well, she says there are a couple, maybe, that you haven't looked at or considered, and I'm raising this, not only because she brought it up, but also because, as a board, we try not to break the bylaws, if we can help it, because we understand that Town Meeting has spoken with regard to this. So if there's some way that we can do a workaround, we try to do that. We're not looking to break the law. But if there's a compelling reason to do so, we're empowered to do that. So it's a high bar, because people shouldn't expect to come in here and just get dispensation for whatever they want. Oh, we'll ignore this in your case, we'll forget about this bylaw in your case, because you're a good guy, or you're a good woman, and this sounds like a good idea. That's not the way we operate. So I was just wondering whether you had looked at other properties that might be available or possible without having to deal with this dimensional issue. Mr. Angley?
If the previous speaker could give us the addresses of those properties, we will look at them.
I know.
Okay, and she will, she will give those addresses to you before you leave here tonight?
Yes.
How's that?
One of the other things is also, this is going to be a retail facility only.
Sure.
And on the north end, there's one piece of property for sale that's actually, it's a, it could work in, when we were looking at it.
Yep.
And when we did the map on purchasing the land, building, site development, and everything else, it added over a couple million dollars.
Yeah, it was too much.
And it made it, you know...
And so we recognize that there are some properties that are not going to be financially feasible for you.
Right, and that's, with an open piece of land, you start to run into the same problem. These facilities are going to start to open up rapidly, and by the time we got an okay today, it started, it would probably be twelve months before we opened our doors because of state regulations. They're going to be opening up in a lot of neighboring communities, and the businesses that, several that just opened up, are reaping right now. So you have to look at it long-term, and as a business, that's what we've done.
I'm going to ask Ms. Ferrant to give you those addresses.
We're taking...
Because we're going to have to come back on this anyway, Mr. Angley. So she will be happy to give you those addresses, assuming that she can locate them, and then you can come back and talk to us about other alternatives in this same district that hopefully wouldn't be within financial means. We don't know, I know you don't know, we have no expectations of you, one way or the other, just for you to look at this.
Sure, we're absolutely...
Who else would like to be heard from on this matter? Yes, ma'am?
Robert Hanson, the pastor, at 307 Tringmont Street.
Are you related to that handsome man sitting to your right?
Yes. One of my biggest concerns is, I have children that have disabilities. I have four, and they all live at home.
You have four children with disabilities?
Yes.
God bless you.
And I am, as a mom, not thrilled at this at all.
What are their ages?
Well, they're now eighteen, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-four.
And they're all at home with you guys?
Yes.
God love you.
And, you know, we have to keep a close eye, obviously, and we have one that just decides to get up and wander sometimes, so we've already contacted the police and let him know, let them know.
Why does this facility, if I can be so bold to ask you, why does this facility cause you such great concern? There are a lot of other people have children in the area.
I live there.
Yep.
We live there.
So do other people, too, and they have kids.
I don't want my kids exposed to any of that.
But isn't that a social policy argument?
No.
How, why is it not?
It's a moral issue.
Okay.
People do what's right. There are other properties that they can use, they don't have to come to Carver.
But...
We came to Carver, okay?
But I know you heard me at the beginning. This is not a social policy debate tonight. That horse has left the barn, right?
I'd like to be heard.
Proceed then briefly.
I would like the board to please consider the fact that there's people living there with children with disabilities. Thank you.
You're welcome. Duly noted, and thank you for your contribution. Yes, sir?
Sabre Moore, 12 South Main Street. Speaking for the other side, I guess you would say, this is possibly not the venue for this. Unfortunately, I was not available when the finding board met, but as a taxpayer in the town of Carver, I think that it's a duty to look at every possible source of income to help defray the cost to every person who lives in Carver. I've done a little research, too. I checked, and between February 1st and April 30th of this year, Wareham, with their 3% made $128,000. That translates to over half a million dollars a year, just in the tax revenue. With their community, post-community agreement, I'm not sure if they're getting the full 3%, but that is another half million dollars that gets specified for particular things only allowed by law. Some of those things are police details, for traffic, traffic mitigation, if you have to do something with expanding lanes to open it up, and also the financing of drug abuse programs.
Mr. Moore, let me ask you this question.
Yes.
Do we do this just because it's a financially good thing to do for the town of Carver? Is that your argument?
Part of that, yes. Part of my argument is that. And the other argument is that the town in 2016 passed a law that allowed recreational marijuana. I'm of the opinion that the bylaw that passed last year is in direct violation of what was voted for in 2016, but that's not a discussion for here. What I would like to ask through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Angley, is if it becomes impossible for a businessman to open up a retail marijuana establishment in the area that was zoned, what can the state come in and do to allow the two stores that the town of Carver voted yes on in 2016?
Well, that's a difficult question for any lawyer. I'm not sure I can answer it, I'm not sure Mr. Angley can answer it.
I can only say that in my readings of what the county commissioner has said, they didn't say exactly what they indicated they would take remedial action against the town if you zoned out, something that had been passed by the Town Meeting.
But that's zoning it out. But that would be zoning it out.
Zoning it out completely.
Right, that's the best, that's my, I cut out of readings what I, what I had.
And if there are other properties in this district that fit the bylaw, then can't we say that the town, by passing the bylaw that it did, did not zone out non-medical marijuana facilities?
If you ask me, I'd say that's probably correct, but I don't know what they, they are going to do. They have a law under themselves.
Mr. Moore, have you completed your remarks?
I just have one more statement I'd like to make based on what Ms. Mellow asked earlier in her questions about determining the distance between the...
Outside the 500-foot area.
Down, all the way down 58.
Yes, sir.
I think that you should clarify that as being areas that are zoned for business and also fall within the marijuana overlay district, because there's a lot of wetlands there, there are residential zoned areas there that do not count as that, that can't count as that distance between the 500 feet and the town line. So just, you know, make sure there's not a lot there.
And that's, that's what I'm trying to find out.
Right. There isn't a lot, there's a lot of law.
Just a moment. Does anyone else who has not yet been heard from want to be heard?
Yes.
I recognize this man. Alan Jermaine, address, please.
Twenty-four Pine Street. Sorry about the coughing, I got a little tickles.
Mr. Jermaine is speaking as a citizen and not a member of this board on this issue. He has recused himself.
As a taxpayer. I think this all boils down, and this is just my personal opinion, this was a brand-new bylaw that was voted last year at April Town Meeting. This is the very first case to come before it, and right away, they want to bust the bylaw by 50%. The town wanted a 50% less setback, they could have voted that in April, they did it. They voted 500 feet. I think it is a disgrace to even attempt this, and I think that this flies in the face of Town Meeting. Town Meeting voted. They didn't vote 10 years ago, and we gave some breaks in between, they voted last April. This is the very first case, and we're going to blow the Town Meeting vote right out the window.
So as I said before, and I think Pastor Hanson led with the very, this very same remark, this board is the only board in town that has the legal authority to break this bylaw. So granted, it's a new one, and Town Meeting voted in favor of this bylaw, but we are charged with the responsibility of determining whether, under state law, there's something unusual, distinctive, concerning the shape, topography, or soil, that would allow us to go in that direction. Now, Mr. Angley has made his arguments based upon certain definitions that he finds compelling in the interests of his client. This board understands that this is a new bylaw, and that we are being asked to break this bylaw after a relatively brief period of time, but we are constrained by state law, and we must be able to demonstrate in a compelling fashion that there is something unusual going on here that would allow us to do that. Now, I know Mr. Angley is ready to talk, but I want everybody to understand that this now is not so much an issue of Town Meeting anymore. Town Meeting has spoken, and we now must decide whether, under state law, as I just said, there's something going on with this property that sets us aside from the other properties in this general zoning district that would allow the petitioner cover, or a legal excuse, if you will, to break that bylaw. That's where we're at with this. This is our analysis in every dimensional variance case. Mr. Angley?
I'm not asking you to break the bylaw, we're asking you to grant relief from the bylaw. That is a distinction that has a meaning.
Are we parsing too carefully here?
We're asking for relief from the bylaw.
Which would mean that we are contradicting what the bylaw says on its face.
We're asking for relief from the bylaw.
I don't want to mince words with you, I think that we understand where we're at with this, you and I. Whether it's relief from the bylaw or breaking the bylaw is written, I think we know what we're all talking about here, right? Who else would like to be heard? Members of the board, again. Mr. Poria, let's start with you. Anything?
Nothing.
Mr. Mueller?
Regarding the Cannabis Control Commission, you said you had discussion with them?
We, I talked somewhere in their office.
So you're permitting through the state, they're going to obviously have a list of requirements of your facility?
Absolutely. It's 150 pages.
Okay, I want to, going to hold those as well.
You what?
I want to get a copy of those, if we could.
Right online.
Yeah, right online.
Yeah, you have the right information, Control Commission, they're right online. It is more stringent than any other facility, immune effect, pharmacy, hospital, and state messages.
We have a lot of...
Ms. Mellow?
I'm good.
And certainly, not last but not least, not least, but last for this purpose, it's Ms. Clark.
Well, you're last. Do you own any other facilities, or...
We're in the licensing process with some, right now, different locations and so forth.
In Massachusetts?
Yes, absolutely.
So this isn't your only endeavor right now?
No.
No? Are you permitted all the way through in others?
No, we're not.
How many other projects do you have going?
We have three.
Including this one?
Yes.
Where are the other two?
We tend not to say at this time, because it's a very competitive thing, and we don't want anybody to...
Have you been before any public boards in the other two communities?
Um...
Yet?
No, we haven't had to.
Correct. Then I respect your desire to keep those projects private for now.
And the only other, when we talk about granting variances, the other thing that we keep pretty mindful of as a board is precedent. And it would be, this would be a perfect example of precedent, whether it's, you know, giving someone two feet off the lot line, you know, the next person can come in and say, well, you gave them two feet off the lot line, when it's actually 30. So we're always mindful of where the, you know, where this could lead. So I just want you to know that we keep that into consideration. Okay, now I'm done. Are we going to see it? I do want to ask.
Well, let me ask again if anyone else has thoughts that they'd like to express at this time? No? 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 So Ms. Clark has expressed a strong desire to go on a site visit, she likes these little road trips that we do.
I only make one.
And in your case, no samples, please. We wanted coffee and donuts from the other one, but no, no samples. What, do we want to do it the same morning that you do the other one?
I'm thinking.
Yeah, it's down the same neck of woods.
It's right down the street.
So why don't we say 9:45 for you? Because we're going to be nine o'clock at the other location.
No, there's at least a 10-minute drive, so let's make it 10.
10, all right. Everybody good for 10? What? The 12th?
I mean, assuming that's good for you, I assume the owner of the property would be somewhere near there.
Well, but I'm not a town that we can, I'm not a town that's three weeks, actually.
Do you have a representative who could...
Yeah, I can...
Your applicant?
She's going to be out of town with me. I'm the applicant, but...
Oh, she's the signed applicant.
She's the signed applicant.
Is the owner of the property available?
I'll have to check with him, he's still running his business out of there, so I'll check with him and see if he's available.
Is Mr. Angley available?
Yes, I am.
Do you trust your very able legal counsel to show us around and answer our questions?
Yes, he has been here.
So why don't we say 10 o'clock on the 12th? And if that does not become feasible because of developments, and you really want to be there, which is your right, then we can move it. But we're trying to...
I'll make sure it happens, though.
We're trying to make this convenient for everybody up here. We get paid big bucks for this, so we want to make sure that we're all there. Okay. Mr. Angley or petitioner, do you have any final remarks you'd like to make this evening?
No, as long as you're not closing the hearing.
We're not closing the hearing. We will not.
I deserve my time.
Yes, you'll be given your time, you know that.
I know that.
Okay, so do I hear a motion to continue this to the date of October 29th?
I'll make that motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I also hear a motion to conduct a site visit at 10:00 a.m. on October 12th?
Make that motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, I do want to point out to members of the public who are here, and also those who may be watching on television, that everybody is invited. It's not just the board members and the petitioner and/or the petitioner's representative who go on these site visits. Sometimes we've had a big gang of people follow us around. So for those of you who have an abiding interest in this particular case, you're more than welcome to come. There will be a notice given of this site walk on the town website by way of reminder. There will not be another public notice published in the paper, though, with regard to either the site walk or the continued public hearing on this matter on the 29th. So your notice is being given now verbally from this chair, and also you'll have it on the town website as well. But no more publications after this date, barring something really odd. But no more publications after this date, barring something really odd. Yes, sir?
On October 29th, will you also take public comment?
No.
No.
No. You know, realistically, what happens is people make comments as they walk around, but we're not going to be engaged in any debate or any formal discussion like we've had tonight.
He said on the 29th.
On the 20th, next meeting.
Next meeting, the 12th, we're not going to be engaged in-
But on the 29th.
But on the 29th, we'll take more public comment.
We'll take-
Okay? I'm sorry, I misspoke. So the 12th, we're not going to be debating, but on the 29th, we will have some additional public comment, if people want. How's that? Everybody good? All right. So we've got our dates.
We have our dates.
And I think we're good on that particular matter for this evening. So thank you, everybody, for coming, I truly appreciate the comments from everybody, I really do. I think you can see how engaged this board is, and we will continue to stay engaged in this process until a decision is made. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say to me, leave this board here?
I wouldn't.
I wouldn't.
Okay. Quite taken.
The next matter on our agenda is correspondence, and the only correspondence, well, we've received a couple of different pieces of correspondence on two different cases, one of which was on our first case tonight, or the second case, the one involving the home-based horse stable business. And she has handed me, as I think she said on the record, a number of letters from neighbors and the butters, which are now part of the record. So I'm not going to read those, there's like five of them in there, if anybody wants to take a look, be my guest.
Can you have copies of those, Charlie, can you have copies of those made and part of our record next week? All right, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. The other correspondence received relates to a matter for which I think we are probably going to need to go into executive session. So let me address that with the board at this time, if I can find my notes. This would be to discuss strategy with respect to pending litigation in the land court case of John J. Caporella, co-trustee of the Caporella Family Trust, dated June 30, 2009, et al. Document number 19MISC-00360, "If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on a litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares." The chair is so declaring that a public discussion of this pending litigation at this time could have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town and this board. So, under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, I ask the board, now that I've stated the purpose for this potential executive session, to have a roll call where each individual member's vote is recorded for the public record. Ms. Mello?
Yes.
You agree to go into executive session on this matter?
Yes.
Mr. Mueller?
Yes, I agree.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Mr. Poria?
Yes.
The chair also announces that we will not be going into open public session again after the conclusion of that executive session. So thank you for everybody tuning in tonight, town of Carver, and we look forward to having you tuning in at our next public meeting, which is October-
29th.
29th. October 29th, 7:00 p.m., in the Carver Town Hall, Room 4. Thank you and good night, everybody.